So we're calling to order the July 19th, 2022 school board meeting. Roll call, please.
Kevin Maron.
Present here.
Leah Canover. Jessica Redonia.
Here.
Angela Steckety. Laura Coyle.
Here.
Carlos Avia. Adina Hoover. Here. And we can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The pledge is right there on the wall. Adina offered to hold it.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, if I can entertain a motion to enter closed session to discuss personnel issues and collective bargaining.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
All right, we're calling an order, returning from closed session and return to open session. We'll proceed with our agenda with approval of minutes. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the June 21st, 2022 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I abstain. Motion approves. We'll move on. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of the June 21st, 2022 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All those approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Can I abstain? And we're going to move along to public comment. I'll start with the guidelines. Public comment is a time for the community to address the board with comments and questions. Each community member addressing the board has five minutes. Once you have been notified, your time is up, kindly step away from the podium. Public comment will be for 30 minutes with no more than each subject lasting 20 minutes. Please understand that this is not a time of engagement. The board will consider your comments in its decisions. For these comments or questions requiring a follow-up response, the board president or superintendent will follow up with you. So first, public comments from Gina Pirelli. And I guess you can, there's a microphone.
The podium right here.
And podium.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak. I know I texted you guys earlier today and I know you guys are still not decided on that new sex ed curriculum. I know Mr. Carey told me that it is required, it is not required, to have the sex ed requirement. I can give you names and a list of other school districts in DuPage County that are opting out of the new sex ed bill. Addison, Bensonville, Bloomingdale, Butler, Cass, Center Cass, Community. I know you said you guys didn't get a curriculum, but a lot of parents have done their research. There is plenty of information on what the curriculum is going to be. I don't understand what some of these grade level guidelines are. Some of them to me are alarming. And I'm just trying to find some examples. And third, well, compared, like, so some of them are, describe how the differences such as age, gender, socioeconomic status, immigrant status, race, or unequal position, student, teacher, supervisor, employment may impact relationships. I don't even know what that means. Define sexual consent and sexual agency. I mean, like, I don't know if a 12-year-old needs to, like, some of this stuff is just outrageous. I mean, you're going to be talking about anal sex and masturbation. I, like, at some of these grade levels, I just, I don't understand it. But the fact that you told me that it's required and it's not, because I can give you more lists of school districts that are opting out of the sex ed bill. So you have an option, in or out. And as a community member, I mean, we should be focused on history and literature and English and reading and math, because I'm guessing that during the whole pandemic, kids suffered, you know, being at home and they lost time. So I just don't understand why this is being pushed on our kids. I don't get it. There's just alarming information that I could provide to you on the sex ed standards. So here, comprehensive sexuality education is a very specific form of Graphics Act. In 2013, the Illinois General Assembly passed a law mandating that any public school that teaches sex ed must teach comprehensive sex ed. So these are some of the things that are going to be taught. Examples of CSE curriculum taught in Illinois public schools is, it draws the line, respect the line, targets age 11 to 13. It normalizes child sex and desensitizes children to sexual activity lifestyles and subject topics. That's just one. Here's another one. Sex ed encourages children to question their gender, engage in sexual experimentation outside of marriage, consider abortion as a viable alternative, as it introduces children to sexual behavior that the Bible clearly forbids. So I guess when you guys are getting your curriculum on August 1st, we don't need this in Westmont. I know you guys can do better in Westmont. So, I mean, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm just so.
Hold on, I'll move.
It just gets so upset. It's so alarming. Here, do you guys want this?
Adina, I don't know if you want to read. Thank you. Check to make sure it's all hooked up again.
I'm sorry.
But I don't know why it became disconnected, so.
This is just the power, right? I'm thinking this is the power.
Make sure she gets that. Yeah, we'll fix it. We'll fix it.
I'm sorry.
Oh, it works.
Next, we have Whitney Rogers.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Whitney Rogers. I am a parent, as well as a Westmont resident. I have children who are, right now, currently in Miller and Westmont Junior High. I have one who was a graduate from Westmont High School. Kind of piggybacking off of what Gina discussed, I just have some concerns in regards to the implementation of the sex education, just because I have my youngest who is going into first grade. So I just wanted to kind of discuss or bring up in regards to the implementation, or at least parents, as well as community members, being made aware of what the curriculum is going to be. As she said, there is information out there in regards to what may be implemented into certain school districts in certain counties. Of course, we all fall under ISBE, but everything is not, you know, in accordance, because each respective superintendent has complete sovereignty in regards to the decisions that they make, you know, for their districts. So with respect to that, I know, Mr. Carey, we only have you for one more year, but with COVID and everything that we've been experiencing for the past couple of years, you know, we've had concerns just with, you know, the implementation of various things affecting our, you know, the administration, the staff, the students, the parents. And my concern is just that this is not implemented or at least brought up and made aware to the parents in a time that parents cannot effectively make a decision that's best suited for their children. As we all know, the parents, we are the first teachers, you know, for our children. We entrust that the administration and the staff and the principals and everybody carry that over to the best of their ability, because you're dealing with more than one student. So for it to be as effective, so that every student is gaining everything in a positive manner, I feel that this information shouldn't be given to the parents or the guardians or caregivers after the start of the school year, if that makes sense. So again, like I said, my biggest concern, I have a 13-year-old, I discussed it with him, he's like, "Mom, you're overreacting." And I'm like, "Well, you have a six-year-old sister too," that certain things, I feel, if I hadn't already discussed it with her, you know, my concern is having somebody else who is acting on my behalf, you know, for six or seven hours out of the day, discussing that, and it may not be something that I'm in agreement with. So that was my biggest thing, just having those concerns addressed prior to the start of the school year, if possible. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I went around. There's no other public comment. We'll move along to the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Personnel recommendations. Jada James, Assistant Principal, Manning Elementary School. Nicholas Koprowski, Band Teacher, WJHS. Nicholas Koprowski, Teaching Assistant. John Cortez, Industrial Arts, STEM Teacher, WJHS. John Cortez, Teaching Assistant. Vanessa Frye, Instructional Coach, Elementary Schools. Peggy Kopinsky, ELL in Reading and Math Interventionalist, Miller. Kathy Jowitz, Reading and Math Interventionalist. Alisa Presswich, Teaching Assistant, Miller. Quentin Brown, Freshman Football Coach, WHS and Resignations. Two, approval of the July 2022 expenditure report. Three, ratification of the June 2022 regular payroll. Four, renewal of self-workers compensation insurance. And five, disposal of equipment and technology. Can I have a second?
Second.
Wait, a motion?
Motion. So moved, sorry.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
No.
Motion passes. Next, to our information and discussion, which starts with the tour of Westmont High School and pool. So we'll step away from the meeting table. Okay, we're returning from our tour of Westmont High School and pool. We will, I guess, are there any other questions or discussion points from?
Do we want to, like, talk about? I don't know.
I don't know. We did a lot of talking, but I don't know if there are any questions left before we move on. Okay. Moving ahead to CUSD 201, 50th year anniversary.
So in, on July 2nd, 1972, there was a line of school districts at the ROE consolidating and forming unit districts, and Wheaton 200 was the first one in line. CUSD 201 was second. Lisle 202 was third. Naverville 203 was fourth, and so that's how we all got our numbers. So we're 201 because we were the second one in line that day. But, so 1972, 1973 is the, was our first year as a unit school district, and so this school year marks our 50th anniversary. And so we've been planning some different activities throughout the year to kind of help celebrate that. And so right now, we're in the process of finalizing our logo for the 50th year, and then we're making the announcement tonight at the board meeting. We're also ordering pillows for our staff and for the board, and then on the first day of school, the staff will wear the shirts with the new logo. I talked to our band director, Alison Biederman, and she has agreed to make the 70s music our halftime show. So throughout the marching season, our band will be playing 70s music. And then our Homecoming Spirit Week is October 3rd through the 8th, and typically, the high school has a spirit week, but we don't necessarily align the other schools. So this year, we will. So everybody will be celebrating Spirit Week. And we'll incorporate a day where it's 70s dress with all the students. October 6th is our homecoming parade, and so we haven't had a grand marshal in the past, but we are looking at a grand marshal this year. And then October 7th is the game, and so we'll invite all of our alumni and have a tailgate for them, and then possibly have them introduced at some point in time during the game. And then also, at our opening institute, we have several employees that have graduated from 201, and so we'll recognize them then. In December, we're thinking of having a basketball game where we celebrate Legacy Night, which again would be our employees who have gone through our school system. And then another basketball game where we'd invite all of our employees and retirees, like a chili and hot dog, and then go to the game. And then we are also, we're still looking to fill in a couple of months, but one of the things that we want to start doing is, you know, it's similar to Hall of Fame of distinguished alumni, and start to identify alumni who have graduated from our school district, who are doing great things, and celebrate their successes.
I could think of one right off the top of my head from this week.
The Illinois Department of Health. So that's some of the things that we're planning, but the goal is to really celebrate our 50th year throughout the year this year.
So what, what were we before? We were, were we, did we just kind of?
We were an elementary district.
Okay.
So we were K through 8, and then depending upon what side of Cass Avenue you lived on, you either went to Hinsdale for high school or Downers Grove North for high school, so.
So do we know, like, why? Why did they, I mean, I'm happy that we are, that we are a small unit district, but like, what spurred this?
My understanding is, and again, this is what you hear, but is that families were concerned whether or not their children were treated differently attending either Hinsdale or Downers Grove. And so they wanted to have their own school district. I believe South of 55th Street was invited, but those families decided not to. So it's kind of interesting that we're only as far south as 55th Street, but it was primarily that the community wanted to have their own high school.
Cool.
Sounds awesome, Kevin, the celebration.
So we're looking forward to it. Should be a lot of fun.
Okay, we're going to move along to my third item, presentation of monthly financial statements.
So in the board packet, you will find the food service and student activity reports for the month of May, along with the fund balance and monthly comparison from this year to last year. Overall, on the revenue side, in May, it was primarily property taxes revenue. In DuPage County, the first installment comes in May and June, the bulk of it in June, but we do get early taxes in May. So there was a 65% increase this year to compare to last year overall with property taxes, and that's spread across all funds. On the expenditure sides, in May, it was end of the year purchasing. So the buildings spent a lot more towards the end of May regarding purchase services, supplies and materials. The business office also received tuition invoices and transportation invoices to close out majority of the fiscal year. We will see more in June, but that was the bulk of the expenditures in May. So overall, the district spent about 89% of the funds in education fund, 43% in the operations and maintenance, and 89% in transportation compared to the budget.
And we'll move along to number four, superintendent search for a discussion.
So at the last board meeting, the board received presentations from two different superintendent searches, BWP and the School Board Association. And so I know some board members are going to reach out to districts and get additional information, but this evening, hopefully, the board can have a discussion and then reach consensus on which group they want to go with.
Let me kick it off. Okay, so I spoke to Mark Cross from District 63 and Terry over at District, I can't remember, Keeneyville. I can't remember their number. So both of them, Mark Cross is the superintendent at 63, and he was one of those tapped on the shoulders from D... IBP? What is it?
BWP.
BWP, thank you. So he actually came from a, from a smaller, more rural district, and Cass was searching for a superintendent. They used BWP and through the network, and after they had completed their interviews with the boards and, and members of the community and figured out kind of what they were looking for in their superintendent, they went to Mark and a couple other people. But he would not have applied if it wasn't for it being brought to his attention, and, because he just didn't know about it. And he did find that he was a really great fit and really loves Cass. And then Terry, the board member over at Keeneyville, so if you guys remember, Omar was the superintendent from Keeneyville. That is the superintendent that they hired. Terry said, you know, "Great experience with them." He did say one thing in particular that was, I thought, really, really smart, was that when they got down to their, like, two, final two candidates, they had them each do a 90-day plan, and they basically had, like, two days to come up with that 90-day plan, and that helped them significantly in deciding. And ultimately, that plan went into effect and was part of it. So I thought that was really helpful from, from that side of just like a little, a cue of something that could be done that I thought would be very, very helpful when you get down to that point. So those were the two that I spoke to.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I reached out to Steve Anderson from Homewood Flossmoor. They used BWP. He felt that they got good value for what they, for the search, and he thought they were very well-connected, so.
And I reached out to Ottawa, ES D 141, and Willow Springs, SD 108. I did not hear back from Willow Springs, but I did speak with someone at Ottawa, I'm not remembering the name of the person. But they worked with the IASB group and essentially were very happy with how the search went and the candidate that was selected, and they, you know, strongly recommended them
I didn't reach out to anybody, but I do have some thoughts, so. I mean, I guess, just initially, and I, I'll be honest, I don't feel like super strongly one way or the other, and so my gut instinct is just to, like, go with the one that's more affordable, but I'd love to hear what other people are thinking. Yeah, that's where I'm at right now.
I kind of agree. I don't feel strongly one way or the other. I don't, I don't know if there's that much greater value with BWP than, than ISAB, ISBE, sorry.
Yeah, I, I actually, when, you know, when starting to think about, I know we talked about doing the reference checks and whatever, I mean, the IASB found Kevin for us, and that's a pretty good, you know, a pretty good referral. So, so a reference that we have on our own, so I guess I, you know, I sort of in my mind was like, hmm, they're more affordable and we have a good track record with them, so if I had to lean one direction. I do, there are things I like about the other group as well. Specifically, Leah, your point that one of your references said about, you know, sort of the active searching, and I, I don't know whether that same is there for IASB, but I think we'll still, I think we'll end up with a high-quality candidate using either firm.
I agree.
I agree, and I think as far as that piece that you said, Leah, about the person didn't even know about it, like, we just keep that in mind in terms of how we're advertising and where we're posting and how we're getting word out there.
Yeah, I don't know that he ever would have heard about it, just because he was so, his district was so rural and so far away from, I'm not sure that he ever would have. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of on the side of, like, all things considered, they seem pretty darn equal. And I do think that the work that Kevin and team have done in the last decade plus has put us in a really good spot to be a very interesting place to be.
Very desirable place.
Yeah.
That plays into it. One thing that I thought that, when you thought about this process even before realizing that we would have helped, is the help with the search and kind of the publicizing it. And the other big thing that is always kind of something we struggle with, even, even though, and we're always aiming to, is getting involvement from our stakeholders in everything we do. We don't seem to get credit for our, our goals for that, and so that's the biggest thing that's, that stands out to me, that I kind of ask, watching you guys, and wondering, like, would one do a better job than the other? That kind of stuck out to me. I appreciate all of you guys' questions. And I didn't leave with an answer that one would be substantially better than the other, but something that I thought about as we talk about funding and how do we pay for this, one thing that we have that's new this year for us is that HR PR person. And we've set aside, you know, a budget for that, and so we have that plus, you know, a search, and so that makes me lean towards, not having one stand out way more than the other. And the record that we have with ISBE, I think I lean towards that also.
Yeah, I think on that, that the thing that I kind of keep going back to is what is our, what are our priorities as a board? And our number one priority as a board is getting really strong community input for this. And in that instance, they're both very equal. They both do the exact same thing, really. They're both going to do focus groups, they're both going to interview board members, they're both gonna, you know, interview stakeholders they're both going to work with. So they're, they both are very equal in that section. When I think of, like, really, truly what our priorities are as a board, that's our number one by, like, a ton. So yeah, I mean, if all things are considered and that's equal on both of them, then why not be smart with some, with, with, you know, our funding?
And just stands out how lucky we are, because I guess you can be on a board and not have to choose a superintendent, but we know that our, our biggest job, number one on that list of duties, is to employ and hire a great superintendent. And doing that with our own work, I don't think would be.
Ooh.
Put it lightly.
Of course, the investment to have expert support, yes.
Definitely want that expert support to do the number one job of being elected, so taking everything into consideration and getting this process started. I think it's very important to then have that, that vote.
So are we all aligned that when we vote, we'll be voting for the two, I think, because we have to word it, right? That we're voting for the IASB contract as presented, basically?
Right, you would, you would include, if the consensus is IASB, that would be included in the motion.
So we can take us, so we do a straw poll now at this point when we get to the approval.
You can do a straw poll now if you'd like.
You get to start.
Oh, I do?
I mean, you said it.
What, what am I saying, just IAS?
So yeah, which, which group are we listing in the vote?
Oh, I support IASB. Yeah. Yeah.
ISBE.
ISBE.
IASB.
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 There is an ISB.
Right, so to make sure we did, we say the right one.
Word of education. You want the Illinois School Board Association.
Yes.
Yes, please.
So I do think this would be a good time to discuss exactly what we are paying for. So we are talking about, we're going to approve it, but to just kind of reiterate the things that IASB will be supporting us through. So I'm just looking at their description. So they've consultation throughout, meeting with the board, meeting with the board to review the search process and establish the timeline, and then a second meeting to develop the announcement, develop candidate criteria with the board, which includes board member interviews.
What is, sorry, which, what are you reading from?
I'm reading from. I'm reading from.
That was on another one.
ISB Professional Services Agreement, which is one, two, three, four, five, the sixth one down. Professional Services Agreement, Westmont 201 PV. There's two of them.
Okay, you're on the second page. Two of two. Okay, got it.
The second meeting with the board, supporting us in the compensation package, developing that candidate criteria, collecting the applications, or doing kind of a preview on all of the applications, reviewing them all, developing a list of the recommended candidates, performing a limited background inquiry, scheduling the candidate interviews, a third meeting with the board to present the recommended candidates, interview prep for the board members, and assist in preparing the site visit as appropriate. And then post-search board superintendent workshop with the field services director. And then we were gonna also add on the focus groups for the staff and community, and then also facilitating in-district stakeholder group interviews with semifinalists identified with the board. So really, I mean, when we talk about a focus on getting the community involved, this is community from the beginning. And all the way through to the end as well, with, with final interviews as well. So.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Any other questions about that or the, no?
So we're gonna move on to item number five, policy first reading as listed.
So there are, the policy committee met, there are several policies that are listed for the first reading and between now and our next board meeting, board members can have an opportunity to look at those. The good news is most of them are very minor one or two-word changes. There isn't significant. The one policy I do want to highlight a little bit, especially on the heels of tonight's public comment, is Policy 660, and that's curriculum. And so curriculum, the policy encompasses a lot of different topics, but the sex education is one of those. Now, the actual policy doesn't say that the district is gonna use any one set of standards, but rather the district will teach sex education. The reason why I say it's not optional is because we are currently required to teach sex education even before any new legislation or anything. We're teaching sex education. We start at the elementary level, students who go to the Robert Crown Center and then junior high and high school. So basically with those standards, we're still waiting. The State Board of Ed has until August 1st provide guidance to school districts. So they still haven't produced anything. We're gonna take a look at it. But, you know, again, obviously what our district will do is what is age-appropriate for our students. Parents will have the opportunity to review any materials, any curriculum being utilized with our students and opt out. And they'll have time prior to that instruction taking place. So, and that's, parents have that option now. You know, so nothing is really substantially changing. You know, I don't think our direction's gonna change significantly. But we're still waiting on that guidance from the State Board of Ed.
So at the elementary level, this is how I understand it as a parent, sex education is not taught on the daily. It is not a regular class that they go to, but that there are at times throughout the year, I think there's Aaron's Law that happens, that I, I know I get communication in about 47 different ways about Aaron's Law and a lot of different methods. So, so that, you know, kind of gets to everybody before that's coming up. And then really, truly kind of the heart of it starts in fourth, fifth grade, if I understand it. And, and also that is let up, so this past year, the fourth and fifth grade sex education curriculum was part of like the PTO meeting that happened prior to it. So the principals were available to answer a lot of questions during that meeting as well. And then information also went home. So is that correct? Or is there other sex education curriculum happening kind of outside of those specific times at the elementary level?
No, that's correct at the elementary level.
Okay. And then it gets to be a little bit more regular at the junior high level?
Right.
And Kevin, I assume we'll have a agenda item about this once the IASB?
Once the IASB comes out. But there's, yes.
And, and follow-up to Leah's question, I have just, as there, I don't know if it's prudent, but is this something to think about having listed in the, all the list of the things when we do registration? Like there are so many things you sign to say for your technology, you know, this will be the potential time period of this, you know, you can sign now, but always can change. I don't know if that's something.
No, that's something that we could incorporate, sure, that parents could elect to at the beginning of the year.
And always say that they should change it at any time. I didn't, I just didn't know.
Yeah, that's a really good idea.
With so much information coming at that time, you're kind of overwhelmed. So will we get lost in it? Or should we wait till that time, like you said, the PTO? I don't know. We can do both.
But I also feel like now that it's on Skyward, now that registration's on Skyward and it's like, you gotta fill out this page, you gotta fill out this page. And it's so much more regimented, it's harder to, to like fly through something. Because it's not just a, sign it and send it off. That's a really good idea.
Yeah, we can do that.
I don't know if there will be time for it, but future planning.
Sure.
Any other questions about the topic?
So as far as the policy reading, we, we have it available to read and then we vote next meeting to approve the changes.
Next meeting will be the secondary again in board approval.
All right, moving along to number six, lighting system at Westmont High School auditorium.
And before I leave this area, I'm gonna turn the projector on for, for the next presentation. In your, good afternoon or good evening, Board of Education, Mr. Carey. In your packet, you have memo from me explaining the, the proposed lighting, new lighting system for the high school auditorium. Typically, in the technology budget, we don't typically cover systems. We're more about classroom technology or student technology. But in this case, because of different grant-funded purchases and the way things sort of got shifted around due to various grants, I was able to find an opportunity in the technology budget to cover that lighting project out of technology funds. So we had, I talked to the finance department here at the high school last year and we had a couple of different companies come out and look at our lighting system and make recommendations for the program. And we have a community member, Dan Buchkowski, who works with us and provides the lighting and sound for graduation. And he's in that business. So he came out as one of the proposed vendors and made some recommendations, looked at the already existing proposal. And so based on our interaction, and he's been back to the school several times to make, you know, comments and consult with us in terms of what the, what the best, you know, opportunities would be and the best solutions. So based on that interaction with him and the proposal being something that was affordable, and we feel it would be a really important benefit to take care of this, this lighting now, because it's been in place for a long time. There's a lot of lights that aren't working. And now this system that Mr. Buchkowski would provide for us would be the latest technology. It would be run from a, you know, from a tablet. The kids could learn how to work it and this, and the lights would be LED rather than those old-fashioned ones. And it would be safer, easier to run, much more, many more applications, much more, a lot more flexible in terms of what we could do. And so it would, I'm bringing that to you to get your kind of feedback. Anthony brought it to the finance committee also to try and get a feel for what, you know, what the opinions or what the, you know, what the appetite would be for that purchase. And the finance committee agreed that it would be an opportunity that we could take advantage of. So this would be your chance to ask any questions?
Any, I guess, feedback on maintenance or repairs for such a system? Is that any?
Because the system is an LED system, it's, it's, it doesn't require like bulb changes and that type of thing. And it's all, and the maintenance or the, the way the system is run, it's a computerized program. So we just get updated computerized programs. And also I was talking to Mr. Buchkowski that tonight, and he said, just so you're aware, the lights that are up there now have not been maintained. They're kind of, they're not tied down, they're not secure. And so he would ensure that our new lighting system would be put in properly with high quality, you know, high-quality maintenance. And so it would be something that will last for a long time.
One question I have, whenever there's like new technology, if there, like what if this one product, because this happened, I think, with one of our heating things, maybe like they stopped making a piece or making a part, or there's a new app or something, will we have to replace it? Or is that pretty easy to accommodate once this new system is in? Like if the maker of that particular app or product or light stops making it and there's a new technology, like what are the chances that that would happen?
You know, luckily enough. We're gonna phone a friend.
So everything is interchangeable. Oh, I have to go up there?
You gotta be up here.
So all, all of the equipment is interchangeable?
So all the equipment is interchangeable. Doesn't matter what company you use. You could use Chauvet, you can use American DJ, you can use Blizzard, you can use Snowblind, any equipment. I can, all my equipment, if you go to the, say, the Spring Fling, or you see any of my sound equipment that's out there, that's, that's all me. So I've got different types of lights, intermixable. The board, literally you can control and choose the manufacturer. The board does it all. The board will go find the software. It doesn't matter who you use, what you use. It just automatically knows what to configure based upon the download to the machine itself. So even in my stuff, when I have, say, 150 lights on a truss, I got 10 probably different makers up there. If something breaks, just interchange it. All you do is literally unplug it, plug the new one in, put the safety harness on and you're done.
Awesome. Thank you.
Everything's interchangeable.
Great.
And it's wireless. So the kids can walk around and the stuff stays up where they, you know what I mean? They can make changes out of it.
Great, thank you.
That's why we're excited about the new program, because.
Sounds really cool.
Our consultant is, really knows what he's doing.
You have to see what's in there now. That's all, that's all that's running in there now. Maybe have to come get it.
Yeah, we borrowed a few pieces from him.
So I just have a comment. This is obviously needed. But something that, that we've said as a board for a while is that we want to keep the community involved. And I think that this is amazing, right? That Daniel, you're a member of our Westmont community and we're able to keep this business here in-house with somebody who lives in the community. And I just like, I think it's really wonderful for so many different reasons. I want to thank you and I want to thank you guys too. Because this is a great, this is a great community connection and this is what we talk about being really important. Yeah.
The auditorium is used by a lot of our community. And it's not just, you know, my focus is really to make sure the resources are appropriate for students and to make sure that, you know, highlights our fine arts program. But the auditorium is used by so many members of our community. So this makes, this new lighting program makes that resource even more of an asset.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move along to action items. First, approval of authorization to pay additional July bills for the 2022 and 2023 fiscal years. The chair will entertain a motion to authorize and direct the treasurer to pay any additional bills received in July that have been budgeted for in the current or prior fiscal year as presented.
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Donio?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved. Second, approval of superintendent search. The chair will entertain a motion to approve Illinois Association of School Boards, or IASB, as the contractor for the CUSD 201 Superintendent Search as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Donio?
Yes.
Number three, approval of tentative 2022, 2023 budget. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the tentative 20.
I think Anthony wants to do a little presentation.
We're gonna do a little brief highlight to the tentative budget. So a little bit of the budget timeline. So tonight, the board will be approving the tentative budget. Once approved, the board would direct me to post the tentative budget for at least 30 days prior to the adoption. And right now, the adoption will be September 27th, board meeting. So a big overview, the fiscal year 23 budget has an overall budget of $36 million. Within that $36.7 million is the operating funds that make up $32.9 million. Education, operation and maintenance, transportation, IREF and TORT. Those are the operating funds for the district. Some budget assumptions made, property tax increase. We are using the 2021 taxes. Overall, there's a 7% increase, not just the 2021, but in addition to CPPRT, which is an additional tax that the corporations pay the district. Also, towards the end of fiscal year 23, we'll be receiving Part I installment of the '22 levy. So overall, there will be a 7% increase. Historically, the district has received roughly 98% to 99% of those taxes. I want to be conservative, so I'm budgeting a 96% in mind of recession coming in. So I want to be a conservative approach on the property taxes. Within the budget assumptions, I'm also adding the '22 bond proceeds of roughly $5.7 million that the district received on July 12th. And now that COVID is having everything back to normal-ish, we'll see a decrease in federal funding. On the expenditure side, we'll see an average increase of 4% in salaries. That's taking account of new hires, retirees, contingencies on open positions. Benefits will, will have a projection of 8%. And then also we'll see an increase of tuition and transportation costs. We are projecting more students taking the bus, which potentially will have a route or two added potentially. And then also outplacement students, we see an increase. So we're gonna be projecting a higher tuition rate. Here is an overview of the '23 projected revenues. Property taxes make up more than half of the projected revenues. And here is a larger scope as a percentage, and I wanted to exclude the '22 bonds. So this is just looking at the operating revenue sources minus, you know, taking away the 5.7. Again, 84% of the local, of the main source revenue comes from, from property taxes. And here is an overview of the projected expenditures for fiscal year 23. Salary and benefits make up more than half of the budget. And in this, this does include $2 million projected cost for construction work. And on the revenue side, I did on that, not on the pie chart, but in the breakdown on the table, I did add the 5.7. So I want to take in consideration the entire budget with these numbers. And here is a percentage breakdown of the projected expenditure. So 53% of the expenditure budget is salaries and 12% is benefits. So this is just a large lens of the fiscal year '23 tentative budget. On the left side, we'll have the budget with the '22 bonds. I want to add that in. So with those bond proceeds and the expenditures coming from the, the proceeds such as HVAC and roof improvements, we'll see a surplus of $1.6 million. We would have to use those $5.7 million of working cash bonds within three years. So we're gonna be, you know, Joe and I will be looking at a drawdown schedule to project the next three years of construction work. But at least with the bond proceeds, this is fiscal year 23. On the right side, I wanted to exclude it and just look at the operating funds and the operating budget. And there's a projected deficit of $2 million. That's it with the slides. But going forward from tonight and the adoption in September, I will be meeting with principals and department heads and looking at their tentative budgets and going through them line by line to see if there's any adjustments need to be made by the time of September. the time of September, we'll have accurate numbers of CPPRT, which is the additional taxes corporations give to the municipalities. We will get more accurate of construction costs and tuition and transportation costs. So there will be a difference from the tentative budget to the budget in September. Any questions?
When are we expecting to have that three-year construction and bond kind of situation laid out?
Yeah, so I know it was discussed in the finance committee meeting. The plan is sometime in August before the September adoption. We'll have a breakdown of projected fiscal years and what projects will be projected in those fiscal years. The reason for it is because we want transparency with the community. We want them to know the reason why we issued the bonds and what the bonds are for, and then also projecting the next three, four years out after these bond proceeds and after the expenditures, what does the fund balance look like? And we'll have a finance committee meeting prior to the September board meeting, which will be more in-depth of that drawdown, but I will also share it with the community prior to the budget hearing.
And you're going to be tracking the bond spend separately for us, so you're going to make sure that?
Yeah, so that's a good point. So what I am planning on doing for this fiscal year and going forward is creating an internal new fund. So on ISB, there's, you know, Fund 60 capital projects, but I want to track internally the revenue of 5.7 and every dollar spent. So I'm creating a Fund 61. It's just internal tracking, and within ISB and audit, it will go into Fund 60. But at least internally, we'll keep in track of where our dollars going, what interest revenue, if any, we get from the bond proceeds if we invest. So internally, we'll track it. And then down the road, if the IRS and the federal government comes to us and say, can you pull all this information? We'll have it record-keeping, we'll have everything in file, and it's just more transparency.
And very nice for us as a board and a finance committee to be able to say, hey, we approved the 5.7, and this is what we approved it for, because we had real specific ideas, and really, the biggest, the biggest thing being the junior high HVAC. But being able to track that, like, this is, this is where those funds came from, and this is where they went out of, and they're not getting like intermingled, if you will.
Yeah, and going forward with, you know, any reports, any reports that I'm going to be drawing up for the board and budget presentation, I will add that Fund 61 to the side. So then, going forward, it'll just be a routine that the board will see, and a routine that the community will see, that this is Fund 61, and I will name it '22 bonds. So you'll see that going forward, starting in September.
I have a question. It's, I think it's probably for you, Anthony, as well as Kevin, but you mentioned transportation and an increase in transportation. Are we going to, between the tentative budget and the final budget, have a presentation to the board specifically on transportation, and what is going to be involved in addressing some of the transportation concerns we had last year, and how the budget is being influenced by that?
So on the finance side, tonight, the contract for Westway is up
Right.
For approval, and that shows a 17% increase. And the reason for the increase is gas prices and just maintenance on the transportation cost. They actually came in over 20%, but with negotiation, we got it to 17. So on the finance side, there will be approval process tonight. In a larger scope of routes and any issues, Kevin and I and the administration can definitely talk about a game plan, presenting it to the community and board. I know internally, I have spoken to the principals and just hearing rumbles historically of any issues, and I want to address it this year and going forward. But in a larger scope outside of the finances, Kevin and I will definitely take a look at it and figure out a game plan to present to the board.
Great, thank you.
Any additional questions? Thank you.
Move along to the motion. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the tentative 2022-2023 budget as presented.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's a little longer. The motion's a little longer.
Oh, it's longer. Oh, there's more.
Yeah, there's more.
Oh, sorry, Dino, keep going.
I'll start over. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the tentative 2022-2023 budget as presented, and that budget will be available for public inspection in the district business office from July 20th, 2022, until the board adoption on Tuesday, September 27, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Motion approved. Moving to number four, approval of the 2022-2023 Westway contract. Any questions or?
Any questions? So again, overall, increase of 17%. And again, that is largely due to inflation and employment and all other factors that everyone is facing. Again, they came first with over 20% and negotiated back down to 17. In regards to the number of routes and field trips and athletics, that can also drop down the cost of the overall. Looking at the number of routes, once we get an accurate number of students and presenting it to Westway, if we're projecting a higher number of routes and they come in lower, that overall cost will be less than projected. But overall, 17% increase for next year.
I appreciate you attaching the memo from Westway Coach.
Yep. And then can you speak to the liability part of it too? And you said that increase there?
Correct. Because of inflation, based on other factors internally on their control, they, they have to increase the liabilities from their lands.
Any other questions or comments? The chair will entertain a motion to approve the one-year contract extension for the 2022-2023 school year for the regular education and transportation services with Westway Coach Incorporated, Oak Brook, Illinois, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Motion approved. Number five, approval of lighting system at Westmont High School auditorium. Questions are coming. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the lighting system at Westmont High School auditorium as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety? Oh, sorry. Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Moving along to the superintendent's report.
So a couple of things in my report. One is, we're starting to approach the opening of the '22-23 school year, and if the board remembers, the last couple of summers, we've had some pretty lengthy meetings talking about protocols and how we're going to safely open school. At this point, I don't anticipate anything changing from how we ended the school year. I anticipate that masks will still be recommended, especially if Pace County is at a high level of transmission. We've contacted North Shore to provide the optional testing for employees and families. But at this time, I don't anticipate any significant changes. Obviously, if we hear anything from the CDC, IDPH, or something from the governor's office, then obviously, we would comply. But at this time, I think the way we close out the year is the way we'll be opening the year. And then also, just a reminder to our families that they'll be able to register electronically for the '22-23 school year. Registration will open on July 29th, and will continue through August 5th through Skyward. And if families are having any issues, they can contact their child's school, or if it's a new family to the district, they can reach out to the schools and make an appointment for registration. My report.
And we'll move along to board reports. Board reports today. All right. We don't have public comments, so we'll move to future meetings and events. Again, registration will be July 29th through August 5th, online on Skyward. And then our next board meeting will be August 9th, 2022, and that will be at return to Village Hall. I'll entertain a motion. I'm sorry, we don't have any other folks' session at this time business for that. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the July 19th, 2022 regular meeting of the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?